...gets so hot that it causes severe burning to the skin. We don't need another dark man. Liam Neeson has that covered. And Liam Neeson is cool.
Public session. Before I pledge allegiance, first of all, welcome to those of you viewing from home to the folks who came out here this evening. Before we do our pledge, I would like to take a moment to remember Kenneth Boprey. Mr. Boprey was a longtime principal here at Farmington High School and most of his education career was spent here in Farmington. I know that Penny and I had him as a principal and Penny spent a lot of time in the office back then, so she didn't really know. No, but Mr. Boprey was just a tremendous guy. Long after his retirement here at Farmington, he would come back and be sitting up in the bleachers at games, at baseball and softball games, and certainly basketball, which was his love. So, we send our thoughts and prayers out to the Boprey family and fondly remember Kenneth Boprey tonight. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any public participation at this time?
Good evening, Charlie King, Ten Row Road. I was at the last meeting and I spoke about my desire to be appointed in the absence seat. And I know you mentioned you were going to be discussing it tonight, but I didn't see it on the agenda, so I guess my question is, are you going to be discussing it tonight?
I forgot to put it on the agenda. I meant to ask Diana to. Yes. We got one other email, so I don't know when folks want me to read that. We just received it on, I think, Thursday or Friday. We have Mr. King's email, which you've all heard and gotten. You have not received this one, so do you want to wait until later in the meeting, under old business?
Under new business, old business.
Under new business? Okay. So, yes, we will read. Thank you, Charlie. Anybody else for public participation? Okay. We'll move on to approval of minutes. Public session from July 22, 2019. So moved by Mrs. McElhenney. Second by Mrs. Moore. Discussion on these.
I just had an observation where we have listed others present. Stephen Henry was here too, but he's just not listed on that.
Other? Any changes? Or? No? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. One abstention?
One abstention.
Mr. Frida was absent that evening. Non-public session one from July 22. So moved by Mrs. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Discussion on these? Okay, I just wanted to make sure the recess wasn't there. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
One abstention.
So if I can just note the numbering on the non-public minutes we have, it goes to, I'm pretty sure this is supposed to be non-public session two, but at the top it says three. Because in the bottom you say two. So that's what I'm going by.
Oh, in the heading.
Yeah, in the heading. And then I think we, yep, and then three is correct. And then four, it's just the same thing. We just want to put your, yeah, I know.
In the heading, Sherry, and where it says non-public session, there as well. Okay?
Got it.
All right, non-public session two, motion. Do they get a motion yet?
No.
Motion by Mr. Frida. Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Discussion on these?
In the board's of the issue, it should be the insurance company. It's already changed. All right.
All those in favor, is amended? Aye. One abstention. All right, non-public session three from July 22. So moved by Mrs. Moore. Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention. Non-public session four from July 22. So moved by Mrs. Moore. Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Discussion on these? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. And one abstention. And non-public session five from July 22. So moved by Mrs. Moore. Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Discussion? All those...
Sorry, just the same note, but in all three of these, we're going to just change to five.
Oh, yeah. Got that. All those in favor, is amended? Aye.
One abstention.
And one abstention. All right. New business.
So that brings us to proposed 240-day contracting calendar for our assistant principals. See if you can look in your packet. You'll see a great calendar that was created by Jana, and I'm going to turn it over to her to explain how this works. 240-day calendar is for our assistant principals. We've also kind of worked out the 17 days of vacation and what would be the paid holidays that they would get. We also wanted to talk a little bit about vacation time and at Severance, how that gets paid out as well. So I'll let Jana go in the blanks.
Yeah, so we found that if, we thought it would be a benefit to this particular category of employee because a typical year is 260 days. That's a full-time position. And because this is on 240-day, we've run into some confusion on behalf of some of the assistant principals as to which days were considered not work days within that calendar. So we thought it would be helpful to define the start date and the end date of that calendar for them, which you can see here with the green boxes. So it would basically begin on August 1st and it would go through July 1st. So the summer month of July, pretty much the whole month of July, would be considered not work for these individuals on the 240-day calendar. We then went back to the school calendar and we counted up the number of vacation days that, like student vacation days, that would have fallen within that calendar, and it was 17. So we felt that that was an appropriate number to offer to them, but we wanted to allow them flexibility so that should they need to work or be asked to work during a school vacation, that they could then use those vacation days at another time in accordance with their building administrator. So they would have their own individual leave plan that they could use. Relative to the payout of vacation time, basically just clarifying in the contract that at Severance, any accrued vacation days are paid out at 30%. If we have it in the contract, it makes it clear for everybody how that works. And the district's intention is for people to use their vacation day during the calendar to refresh and renew and all of those things. So we already have a cap on the number of days that are allowed to be rolled to the next year, and that's supposed to be 10. But this would allow people to understand, you know, what exactly would happen if they decided to leave or, you know, they decided not to renew.
Just a quick one. Fourth of July, you don't have that listed as a holiday, is that not?
It's outside of their contract here.
Oh, yep, okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the only holiday, actually, Penny, that's not included in this calendar.
Yep. As soon as I went back.
And this is, this is not a change to the days of the assistant principal role?
No.
They have been at 240.
Right. It's just more, it's just making the application of the contract a little easier, a little more clear for both the employee and for the business office so that we understand how to, how to track vacation and they know exactly what they're eligible for.
Right.
So at this point, because those of us, we're changing the language about the 30%, some people are at a different percentage in terms of payout for vacation. The plan is, I think at this point, those that have signed their contracts already, that remains in place. But moving forward, all contracts will be changed to payout of 30%. So that's the vote we're looking for, for approval of this, and then approval for an amendment of contracts as we move forward to vacation payout of 30% at Severance. Sounds good.
Non-public motion.
Motion. To accept this as presented.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Discussion?
You're making that vote. Do you want two, you want two separate motions, correct?
Well, I don't think so. It's all-inclusive in the wording.
No, I think, I think if you, the calendar is kind of an exhibit, I think, to go along with the contract. So if you're okay with the terms of the contract, I think, I think that would do it.
So, sorry, calendar and contract, I guess, yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
So next, on your agenda under new business, you have job description, Director of Curriculum Instruction. And so I've placed in your packets, and it's also online. A description of a revised Director of Curriculum and Instruction, keeping, keeping all the duties that had been there previously, but adding specifically, and I'm not sure how this ever happened, but there was no indication about the responsibility for the development and implementation of federal and state aid grants and the requirement to write and revise and implement those title grants. So what, because that's a huge part of the job, so I wanted to make sure we got that in there. And then again, just going back to, you know, assisting in, you know, developing the budget, that the person is obviously the instruction, one of the instructional leaders. They direct the development of long-range plans in terms of our K-12 curriculum. Let's see what else. Evaluation of pre-service and in-service training programs, because that's also, that's part of, you know, managing the grants as well. And we do need to have a check-in regarding, you know, surveys from parents in terms of, you know, for Title I, finding out their interests, engaging their engagement. So that's part of what we need to do as well. That there's also, coupled with that, holding an open, you know, an engagement night for parents, which also can be part of open house, but we are obligated to talk about the Title I schools for Henry Wilson and Valley View. Also mentioning the processing of staff recertification and alternative education plans for those people that don't hold a certificate, but instead hold a statement of eligibility. My sincerest apologies. Also mentions the coordinating of homeschool notifications, because this person also is responsible for that, and also homeless liaison at the district level who works to coordinate transportation, because that is also a portion of this job as well, which are the last two items, I think, of this. And then just changing the format so that it's consistent with all the other job descriptions that we have right now.
And it is 40 hours.
Correct. It's, well, I mean, it's, yeah, it's 260-day exempt. I mean, obviously, if you can't get it done in eight hours, you're going to stay longer. So that's part of it.
Now, we've had some discussion about changing the title.
Right. And then I, when I went back through Penny, I'm not sure what I was thinking, because it is, it does hold a supervisory designation in terms of those people that are Title I, teachers and paraeducators. So therefore, didn't pursue that anymore. So thanks for making me look again.
No worries.
Appreciate it. So we'd just be looking for, either to accept this as a first read. We are in the process of pulling applications and beginning the process of vetting individuals to see who we might bring on board as a replacement.
I'll make a motion to accept as a final read.
Motion to accept as a final read in a second. Discussion. I'm going to vote no. And the reason I'm going to vote no is because I'm not convinced that this is the direction that we can, that we still need to go in. I'm not negating the fact that curriculum is very important and all that Title I piece. Further comment would make us go into non-public kind of reputation, so I'm not going to go any further, but I am going to vote no. And then when we have a conversation at some, at a point, we'll probably be in non-public at some point to talk about hiring and bringing up some other concerns. So just so people know why I vote no. It's not just because I'm in a grumpy mood, but I have a reason.
Would you like to table this and have that discussion first? Because I'm okay with that.
I don't think, I, well, because if voting yes drives how we're going to move forward on this position, then I, then I would appreciate a table, because I think we need to have some conversations. And the reason that they have to take place in non-public is because I'm going to talk about staff performance.
Okay, I'll motion to table.
No, I have questions. No, 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 that's fine.
Motion in a second to table this for now. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
So that gets us to the next piece, looking for a board member who would be willing to sit on the presentation for the Performance Contract Selection Committee, and then also for interviews for Director of Curriculum Instruction. So just looking for individual who's willing to, and it could be two separate individuals, willing to partake in that.
So that Performance Contract, and just so you know, that one, that's going to be a little further down the road. We're talking probably, and that would be in conjunction with whoever the member is, but I haven't even put the RFP out yet. So I'm thinking that probably wouldn't be until mid to late September. But I'd like to know who might be willing to sit, because we do need to have a board member when they make their presentations regarding that.
Just a question, timeframe. What are we looking at for meetings to join?
Basically, the, we would do, I would do, in the business office, all of the front-end work. We would get the RFPs out, we would get the bids back in. But this is a different kind of contract. So instead of just opening an envelope and reading the bids, we, they actually get an opportunity, it usually takes about, usually get one, one to three companies that come back, and they generally take about 45 minutes to explain their, their contract, because they are quite intensive and there's a lot of detail.
Well, I guess my question actually was, would this be during the day? Would it be at night?
I know that at least one of the contractors is quite accustomed to working outside of business hours, but my recommendation would be to try and do them all on one day, so that we have, you know, don't have to break it up. So maybe late afternoon into the evening, or, you know, something like that.
For both or for, I mean, we're just...
This is, I'm just talking Performance Contract. The other piece is, it's me. Yeah.
When do you foresee this absolutely needing a board member? At what time, at when?
I think mid-September, I would need to pick a time, like with that board, and ready to know who it was, so I can pick a time that would be amenable to their schedule. But I'm thinking that's probably about the right time to have that interview process so that when, as we go forward and look at the budget and look at planning for the next year, we all know what we have going.
I'll do it.
Okay. Thanks.
I have the flexibility to schedule.
The other thing I was going to suggest was waiting until we appoint a new member and we have five people to select from.
If that person is...
But for now, you'll...
We could have two.
For, to address the potential interviews for Director of Curriculum and Instruction, we started doing some screening of applications already, because we had a population of people here that could do that. So I was looking, hopefully, at Thursday, the 8th, beginning at 5:00 PM. Because I know, and I know that might not exactly help you, Mr. Frida, but I know people have asked that we do it later. And my teachers said we'll just do it later.
Think I can make the, I would like to do it, but I don't think I can make the 8th.
I can't make the 8th.
Neither can I.
Neither can you. Okay, so we won't be doing it the 8th. Friday might be out. We could maybe, what about Monday, the 12th?
I could, I mean, I just can't get here 5:00. I could get here...
5:30?
No, not even 5:30. 6:30.
6:30?
Yeah. So that's the earliest I could get in.
I won't be able to do Monday either.
You couldn't do Monday.
I can't do Monday. I can't afford 15.
Can you do Monday?
I can.
So can we say Monday, starting at 5:00? Does that work for your time?
Sure. I might be a few minutes late, but I can be here by Monday at 5:00.
Okay, so we'll say...
Thank you, Martina.
No problem. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. So that was that. The next part we wanted to discuss was the migration from ADS, which for those people that are watching our home, this is our business software that we use for creating checks, you know, setting up a position within the program in order to pay people and, you know, track their withholdings and all that other stuff. To Infinite Visions, which is a much, much more, well, it's much more contemporary than the ADS program that we have right now. We've kind of been sharing with you and with the public the struggles we've been having. This is very much a system that's on its way out. Jana can speak more to the specifics of it and the frustrations of having, you know, days where you only have from 8 to noon, where you can actually work with somebody who can assist you online, and because they're not supporting it anymore, there are no more updates. So, you know, things are kind of gradually falling apart. However, it is a process to prepare, to get ready, to migrate to Infinite Visions, and we do want to have a conversation about the financial impact and then also the time impact in terms of how we get ready to do that.
So I'll start with the time impact, and then we're all going to make sure we're sitting down when I get to the dollar. The time impact, because this is not just for payroll, this is actually our whole general ledger. It's the enterprise system that governs everything that we do, from payables to GL. It has all the different modules that we have, a human resources module. They estimate the migration time, because it's not like you can put the system out of commission and then bring it back up. You have to kind of ease it into it and make a transition smoothly. It's six to nine months. So if we had a go time of, you know, July, we would have to start that process in the fall to get, you know, to check our data and get our data aligned and do all those things and test. So it's not a real quick thing. We also don't have a choice. They have basically said this software is end-of-life. While they have not yet given us a date as to when there will be no support, they have been very, very clear that they're expecting clients to migrate off of this platform to something different. And there are a couple of options. For our district, I feel that the Infinite Visions option is better. Munis is geared more towards like a municipality, because they, with things like shift differentials on ambulances and things like that, it's a very powerful, potent software, but it's a little bit overkill for a single school district. That said, the estimates that we've got, which would involve training, migration, we still would remain hosted, we'd have our data remain hosted, is roughly around $50,000. And we do have some money that we will be most likely returning to the technology fund once my, once the audit is complete. So there will be some capacity there. And we may want to talk about budgeting strategies. Maybe we budget, try and do half of it from, you know, budget and take the other half from capital reserve and do it over a span of time to lessen the impact of making that shift. But it is going to be a process, and it involves a human capital obligation as well as a financial obligation, because the migration takes a lot of, takes a lot of effort in testing and things over and above just what we do now. So I just wanted the board to kind of be aware, we have requested that quote, that was the number that came back. It would cover nine core users, which my business office would, our users would be the core users, but there is a portal that everyone in the district could access for leave, they could get their pay stubs on it, sort of like what we have net, we have a similar thing now, but this is a little bit more potent. Contracts can be issued on this portal, they can be signed and tracked and returned that way. There are a lot of features of this portal. It's really the newer, kind of a newer, more enhanced part of that, so.
So this is essentially just a heads-up right now?
Yeah, just heads-up. Just heads-up. I just didn't, I just wanted to prepare everybody.
I have to start planning.
I'm assuming the version of Infinite Vision would be 2019 or 2020, not 2015 or 2014?
No, 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 they, yeah, it would be whatever the current one is. And there are some, like I said, there are some other features that, that are, that come with Infinite Visions that sort of enhance what we have. We have a module with the program we have now that allows, it's sort of a portal, but not really, but it allows the employees to have a little bit of self-service. This, because we own that in this software, they give us a discount on the new version of the portal, which has much more, much more comprehensive.
Is this the new name for ADS?
No, actually, this is a hybrid. It's a hybrid, I think it started, I think ADS is one of the pieces, but there was, and I'm, Jen may know the name of it, but there was another software that they kind of looked at both, brought them together, and they basically said this takes the best of this one and the best of that one, and they moved along from there. But it has, it, believe me, it's been beta-tested. This is, the Infinite Visions is not new by any stretch. It's been around for probably 10, 15 years, and they make updates to it regularly, they make enhancements, they have 24/7, well, I won't say 24/7, but because they service such a wide range in the country, you know, you can get a call at 6 o'clock in the morning, but you can also get a call at 9 o'clock at night, because they're still working in California. So it has a much better support model than what we currently have. And we surveyed a lot of districts. We surveyed a lot of districts, yeah. So we know who is using Infinite Visions, who is using Munis, what the other districts went to. We also got feedback from Conquer and a lot to know what is the difference. And I've worked with Munis as well, and the big feedback was Munis is more municipality, Infinite Visions is better for a school district our size, it's a lot more intuitive. But what we wanted to make sure is we brought back towns that we could point to, and this is what they did, this is their process, quotes and so forth. And then I provide that information with, from Ms. Mellon, so she could go through and get. Now, one thing we already did was they said a good step forward was to put ADS hosted with them, which we already did this past year, because that way we're up to date with all plugins, everything that we need, so when we do go over, we're already up to date. So we've already done that one step, no matter which direction. The other thing that we've started to do in preparation for this kind of thing, because I came from a district that did work on Infinite Visions, their payroll software runs much differently than ADS. It's more position-based. It's not people-based, it's position-based. So we have started, the new payroll clerk, Elaine Sherman, and I have started to migrate our payroll conventions over to a little bit different way of entering them in the system, so that they would be more portable when we did make that crossover. So we're, it's going to take a little time, and we're doing it kind of position category, back position category, but we are working towards those ends.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff? Thank you.
So the next three are Jana as well. So we did post on our website the results of our lead testing, so that's been up there. We did have some things to fix, but we also got some money for fixing them, so.
Right. The grant, the way the grant worked is the districts would, could receive up to 50% of what your remediation cost was. And we didn't have a lot, Larry can speak to, I think there were only five sites that we needed to fix, and some of them he was able to do in-house with his staff. It was just replacing a faucet. So the amount that we put forward, it wasn't a windfall, it was $784.39, but we will be getting a check back for half of that, which is roughly $392. So if the district can just vote to receive that unanticipated revenue, my, my thought is that we put that right back into Larry's budgets for other things that he might need to do with buildings and grounds and upgrades to future things with lead and things like that.
Make a motion to accept that revenue of half of 792.
What was that, 392?
It's 392 is what they're actually paying us back.
392. Thank you.
Motion by Mrs. McElhenney. Second by Mrs. Moore. Discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
That moves us to the...
Fuel bid.
Fuel bid. Yep, so you can find a packet in there that shows your grid.
So I had hoped to have more options for you. We've got a good option, we got a really good price from Irving Oil. We did start out with two bidders, and there was a funny little story. He called, he had submitted, and I'd calculated, and it looked like he might have even been a little lower than Irving. And then he called and he said, "I just realized, you're Farmington, New Hampshire, not Farmington, Maine. We don't even deliver there." So he needed to withdraw his bid. So we're back to the one, but the, this is based on actual usage last year of what we did per gallons, and things fluctuate a little bit, but I'm pleased to say that this amount is going to be within the budget that we have in, for fuel oil. So I'm just asking the board to vote to accept the bid, so that we can get our contract in place before heating season.
I will make the motion to accept the bid from Irving Oil.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept the Irving fuel bid.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Discussion? Questions? All in favor?
You're welcome. And this next one is very quick. I think some very good news from the school lunch program, as well as a request of the board to consider a pricing issue. But we, just last week, the governor voted to fund the portion of reduced breakfast that previously was 30 cents to the family. The governor has voted to pay for that. So kids that were on reduced can now get free breakfast. They don't have to pay any, anything, which I think is tremendous. So that's brand new. As such, we had to revise our pricing, our pricing algorithm, so that when we put it up on the website, it shows that a reduced breakfast is at $0. And then the other one, item I wanted the board to consider, we don't have a lot of people of adult lunches, but Cafe Services felt that the cost of providing a, an adult lunch, we've been charging $3.50 for some time, and they felt that the cost was more appropriate to bring it to four. And I wanted to ask the board, we've raised our student lunches by 10 cents, which we voted on in the spring. And I wanted to ask if the board was okay raising the adult lunches by 50 cents for this school year.
As someone who works in a school district, I can tell you that the portion you give to a student and the portion you give to a staff member, I mean, by their standards, it's the same, it's the same meal. So I would be opposed to increasing it.
If anything, I would be okay with maybe a 10 cent increase, because that's what we did for the students. But I'm not comfortable with the 50 cents.
Okay.
Any way in?
No, but in favor of corporate lunch services, anybody say no?
Okay, so leave it at the $3.50, or do you want to entertain raising it a little bit?
25 cents?
Okay.
Let's make a deal there. We can bargain down.
I'm gonna make a motion to raise it to 3.75. And is there a second?
I will second.
There's a second for discussion?
How can we justify raising the adult meal by 25 cents and the students one by 10? I just want to know.
I'm just going by the recommendation that Cafe Services thinks it should be a little more. It must get more than 10.
Was the, doesn't the student, wasn't the student one initially more than 10 cents though?
Actually, we were supposed to raise the student one by about 50, but we, we only had to raise it 10.
Is there a level we only have to raise this one by?
No, because this isn't, this isn't really, this is à la carte. They, they don't count this in with student lunches.
What was the justification for saying we have to raise it?
Well, it has to do partially with the contract, because when we do our costs, that's part of our contract every year that we have to re-up. And when they build their pricing model, they made the assumption that we would raise lunches by 10, 10 cents. And they also made the assumption that if we raised our adult lunches as well, that the dollar amount that the district wound up paying out at the end of the year would be X. So when we looked at the contract, that's a, that's not something that we have to do. It's not something that is required, just like the school lunch. You can opt not to do that. Let the board, just to be aware that that will, that was factored into their pricing. So if we don't raise it, I don't think we do a whole lot of adult lunches anyways. I don't think it's going to be material, but it would come out of the bottom line of what we owe the food service.
It bothers me on so many levels.
Yeah, they assumed we were gonna raise it, but they didn't mention it before.
Oh, they didn't mention it.
Yeah, well, it was part of the, the contract. They put together a proposal of, of pricing. And some of it is that I wanted to really address early on about the student lunches because I wanted to give us plenty of time to prepare for that. And I didn't have all of the contract prepared at the time I brought that to the board. So.
Any further discussion? Or a motion, a second, all was in favor of raising it to 3.75? I'm opposed.
I will make a motion though, to raise it by 10 cents.
There's a motion by Mrs. McElhenney to raise it to 3.60.
Right.
So a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
It's the same as the students. We're being across the board.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Thank you, thank you.
So that gets us on to policies?
Nope. That gets us on to school board vacancy, because I just thought.
Gotcha. Oh, you're sorry. Yes, sir.
Um, what?
Oh, okay. During new or old?
Well, it is, it's kind of new, because we have a new email.
Okay.
Dear Farmington School Board, recently it has come to my attention that a vacancy on the school board as a member, as a member, exists because a member had to resign. I am very interested in filling this position for the remainder of the term. I feel with over 30 years in education field, I could add insight and knowledge to help benefit our students and our community. I look forward to hearing from you, and please let me know if you need anything else from me. Respectfully, Mr. Butch Lewis. So former principal at Henry Wilson and a former school board member has expressed an interest, as well as Mr. King. So we have two folks that are interested. I don't know if the board wants to take some action, how they want to do this, but I'd like to get a new board member on here soon.
Should we discuss in non-public?
I don't think so. I don't think there's any reason to.
It's an official call? It's an elected official, so.
At some point, I had a conversation with the school clerk on, I think it was Friday, because I wasn't sure how it worked. Like, if we were ready to vote on it, do we have to have her at a meeting? This way somebody in, this is the new water for me that we're treading. So, and, you know, she said there are basically two, two ways to look at it, and that other boards have looked at it in similar ways at different times over the years, whether you put somebody on who was on the ballot and lost the election, or you put somebody on who maybe had been on the board before and expressed an interest. They've also put people on that weren't on boards before. I'm not interested in doing that. We didn't have anybody volunteer anyway, so. Typically, I don't, but since it's, since you're, I usually wait till the end, but go ahead, Charlie.
Yes, Charlie King, town hall, I voted. All of you know me, you know that I've been participating in town government probably since 2001, when I first got on the plan of boards, a junior member. I since went on to be the chairman of that board for quite a few years. Was able to lead that, that board through some times of strife with not getting along and issues. I was on the board of selectmen for nine years. I also was chair there for quite a bit of time and was able to do the same thing. Bring people together for the betterment of the community. I'll point to one of my biggest accomplishments was the community safety building. We had a lot of people involved. Public, public group got together, tried to put it together, came up with a $4.5 million estimate. I was leading the board. I said, "Let's go back to the drawing board," where I led the board through a better RFP process, provided conceptual drawing for them, and basically was able with the board of selectmen to lead to a $2 million savings on that project, and came up with a very fine project that has received awards based upon its ability. I, you know, I have to thank the builder, who did an excellent job. But there's been a lot of cases where I brought a lot of benefit to boards based upon my life experience, my ability to work together and dig into the details, even when it's not my forte. So.
Thank you. What's the board want to do, take action tonight, or what?
I'll move to appoint Butch Lewis. He's a former educator in our school district, and he's experienced.
Motion by Mr. Frieda to appoint Mr. Lewis to the vacancy. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Can I just ask, I, I know Charlie very well from all your boards and everything. I don't know Mr. Lewis. I'm at a disadvantage. So I would like it if the people that do know him, if you guys could give me some feedback on him as well.
Mr. Lewis was a principal at Henry Wilson. He was there for 20 years.
20 years.
A good chunk of time, good administrator. He was a good board member.
I didn't work as a board member. I worked, he was, he was my teacher in middle school.
He was mine.
I think he did 34 years here in public education. And then Butch and I did work together when I was principal of the fourth through sixth building, and he was principal of the seventh and eighth building. But I know that he did get elected to the board shortly after retiring and served a term, but I didn't, I, by the time I got on the board, I think he was gone.
Yes.
I think that he finished his term.
Just another follow-up question. Why did he leave the school board?
He just didn't rerun.
I was curious.
Any further questions or discussion?
No, I just think he's, he's a former member. He's got experience in the school. He's got experience on the board. He's someone we could use. Supporter of education.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to accept Mr. Lewis as the appointee that would go until March, in which case we'd have three openings. One would be a two-year term, and then the other two would be a three-year term. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Just because I don't know him.
Okay. Mr. Lewis is appointed. Mr. King, thank you for your interest. All right. And I guess, you know, after speaking to Mrs., to Cathy Seaver, there's a form that I have that if we had voted, we have to sign. And then I think she has to give, I have to give it to, someone gives it to Mr. Lewis to bring down there and have it notarized so that he can get sworn in.
Should I contact her for the form or?
I have. I emailed it to me and I printed it out here. I don't know if I brought it or not.
Okay.
Okay.
So that then now gets us to policies.
Policies.
And Stan, I know you've worked hard on these. If there's anything you want to speak to, these are all in.
These are all final reads.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to accept them all as final reads, as listed.
I'll second.
Was there anything you wanted to highlight for us, or?
No, I think they're, they're all pretty good and.
They really are. They just did a lot of work.
We put some time to put them together.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
The policy about behavior management and intervention, is that boilerplate state policy or?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's important to highlight that, that, there's a statement in that policy that says, "Disciplined reaction will focus both on consequences and on changing inappropriate behavior." And, you know, that's something that I hop on a lot. I'm not sure that we always do that. I think that we get caught up sometimes in like, well, what did the kid get for punishment? And I absolutely agree that consequences are necessary, but there has to be a piece in where we're processing behavior with kids and we're trying to teach them how to change behavior. By throwing them out the door for a three-day suspension every time is just not going to work. So I just wanted to kind of get at that.
Can I ask a question on one of the policies? The one that has, I think it's GCO. It references in the second paragraph, it says, "In the development of this policy and its corresponding appendix." Am I missing the appendix? Because I don't see it in here.
Then I'm not sure.
Because this, this is the very matter, one of the very matters that we have the human resources consultant. We just got a bunch of information from her, and one of the items that came back was a suggested sort of rubric for addressing this very matter. So if we're missing some pieces to an appendix, I'm wondering if maybe we might be able to give the board a chance to see the information from the specialist and take a look at that to see if it might be something you want to adopt.
So it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, "Performance and evaluation system will include procedures, evaluation criteria, and other components necessary to evaluate certified teaching personnel. Such procedures, criteria, and components may be included as an appendix to this policy." Said if we adopted this as it is, we could still open it back up to add the appendix.
Well, but in the next paragraph, it says, "It will involve teachers and principals in the development of this policy and its corresponding appendix." Makes it sound like it's there.
Well, this, the policy here is that will involve teachers and, and the stakeholders in developing the policy, which we have to do. So this is just about a process for developing.
And they would make those corresponding.
Right. They would. This, this policy won't produce the evaluations. It just allows us to say, these are who we're going to evolve, involve in the.
So this, if I'm understanding you correctly, that second paragraph, then, anything that we bring forward that we might have the board look at in terms of rubrics and evaluation components, would then be, to the degree it should be, involve teachers and principals before developing it.
Develop that policy.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on policies as presented? These are all presented as final reads anyway. Did I get a motion to accept them as a final?
Yes.
Okay. Did I get a second?
I did.
I did, thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now you need to make a motion to rescind your numbered policies, so that, I believe if I understood you, Mr. Frieda, that the policy committee had recommended we now have all the required and mandated policies that must, we must have in place. Anything else is?
Yes, and what we're trying to avoid, or work around, if you will, is that there are notebooks around that have numbered policies in them, and they're in various forms. Some of them have been, have been replaced by these lettered ones, and others may not be. So we want to make sure that all of our online policies are up to date, which they are now, and then those books need to disappear.
I've collected them in my office.
We used to have one in every library.
We must have got this.
But there may be still some hanging around on teachers' desks and things. And so if we have a rescinding of all the numbered policies, they can't say, here I have this policy that says it was formed, and we haven't done a new one. So it could be all old information. So if we rescind those, then we can start working again from new with all the things we might want, because these are all the necessary ones.
I'll make the, I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Moore. Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So that gets us.
Employee tuition agreement.
Correct. So you'll find in your packet, one is just a copy of the policy, JFAB, admission of tuition in non-resident students. And do want to make a note, and any employees that wish their children to attend do have to make sure that they send that forward for August 15th for a request to the board. So, because I know there have been some staff members that have asked us, and we've gone through that process already. So what you have not yet approved was the non-resident tuition agreement. And you see a markup of that here. There is one for simply a non-resident, and there's also one for non-resident employee. You set a dollar amount for the employees at $2,000 per student. Just to be clear, that in both cases, employee and just simply a non-resident, this does not include transportation. This does not include any special education services. This is simply the tuition for attending the school. We have also, if you look on the non-resident tuition employee and under item four, Jenna set up a payroll deduction plan.
We had a request to do this on payroll deduction. And that's something I don't believe has been done. So I wanted to make sure the board was okay with that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
The only thing that I, the only caveat I would say is that for our regular tuition, what we said is that you pay half in September, you pay the other half in December, and that rides you through. So if we had an employee, for example, who's doing payroll deduction and chose to leave the district in October, my recommendation to the board is to say, we would then revert back to the non-employee policy, meaning that you will make restitution up through December and then pay the balance there. All of a sudden, when you're not an employee, you go on the other payment plan.
That makes sense.
I'll make the motion that we accept the non-resident tuition agreement employee.
And the employee.
And the employee.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept the non-resident tuition agreement and the employee tuition agreement as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. McElhenney. Any discussion on this?
Is there, there's a $2,000 cost to the employees. There's a blank in there. Do we?
We never really set it, and no one asked yet. In our tuition policy, it says the board will entertain that discussion every year annually, but we haven't yet had a.
We did set the.
I, I remember. I, and remember there was a discussion about it. And I think that, I, my recollection was that it got tabled, Angie had some concerns about making it too high.
Is it tabled? I'm looking at Sherry.
I believe it was tabled, I believe, because it's the discussion that's just.
So when we, when we voted on the number that Ms. Vaughn presented, that was for current year?
No, that was last, that was a year ago.
Well, it wasn't a year ago that we voted on it.
Oh, it was last October.
Was it that far along, though?
Yeah, it was.
So it's okay for us to approve this without a number, and we discussed the number.
Yeah, because I think what we would do is if somebody, right now, we don't have anybody that's asking, and if there was a debate, because I calculated using a state formula, but there are lots of districts that don't choose to do that, they say, well, we're going to cut that rate down to, on the assumption that we get federal funds for certain things, so we'll set our own rate a little bit lower than the per pupil cost. And that's a discretionary thing for the board to decide. But at least the language of the contract is there, so if it comes forward, we could bring it, we could have to decide something.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So we did go through the results of the RFP for the day tank, but I don't recall that we had a vote to expend from the heating systems replacement CRF, which you are agents to expend. In addition, it's a CRF, so we didn't, we pulled them in meetings, so we just wanted to get it in the meeting minutes, that that had been agreed. I believe that was the understanding of everybody, but I don't agree, I don't recall there being a meeting minutes, that we'd had a specific vote to vote to expend for the day tank from that location.
Why did I think of that?
You voted to accept.
The bid.
The bid, so that's, that's, might be what you're recalling.
Well, we need to vote to take it out of the capital reserve.
So I'll move that we take it out of the capital reserve.
Second.
Do we need to have a dollar amount in that note?
Is it 14,125?
Yep.
14, $1,425.
Motion by Mr. Frieda, second by Mrs. Moore, discussion? All those in favor? Anything in the old business, folks?
Actually, there's a couple on that same sheet, if we could kind of keep going on that, then, so the first, there were, there were several things that we needed to do on that CRF, the first one had to do the day tank, but then there was a second request there. We would like to ask the board if they will agree to post a hearing on the following, to be scheduled with the August 19th meeting, to allow a hearing for the release of funds from SAU 61 Technology Fund, in an amount not to exceed $5,000, for the purposes of purchasing an alert notification software that connects directly to first responders. The project's being planned in conjunction with the Farmington Police Department, the county, and Ms. Loughton is working on, you know, some of those details as well, it's something that was part of our safety recommendations when we had that done. It hasn't been budgeted, but we also are going to be receiving unanticipated revenues from E-rate this fall, in the amount of $9,783.98 approximately. So if the board would vote to accept those unanticipated revenues, we would use the capital reserve to get the project moving, when that money came back in, we would accept it as revenues, and we would return it to the capital reserve, to replenish the capital reserve for technology.
So basically, we just, we don't vote on that now.
No, we're not voting here. Just, just. Yeah, but that's, that's the, that's the.
Does the board want to go in that direction?
Yeah, but you can vote on the unanticipated revenues, those definitely are coming.
To accept those?
Yep, and you can vote to deposit the unanticipated revenues into the technology CRF.
We don't need a dollar amount?
So those two pieces you can vote on, then decide to use that, you know, the CRF.
If you have to vote on during a public hearing, you just don't have the means of doing it, let's, let's get it out right away. Because sometimes we get caught up with things, and then we go, oh shoot, we have to put that out there, and we miss the timeframe, so we could do it tomorrow, in fact.
I will make that motion to accept the E-rate amount.
$9,783.98.
Can I make a friendly amendment to say up to $10,000, just because?
Yeah, that, thank you, I appreciate that.
Up to $10,000.
Up to $10,000.
To be deposited into the technology.
Capital reserve.
Ms. McElhenney, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Frieda, discussion?
It should say the SAU Technology Fund, or is it just the?
It's the SAU 61 Technology Fund, that's the way the trustees have it listed.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All set?
Thank you very much.
So we'll post a public hearing for, to run in conjunction with the board meeting in, for an hour, like you normally would. Any other old business, folks? Public participation, Mr. Henry.
Steven Henry. On the lead mediation report, I read through that, that was a lot, you know, it listed every fixture, and the percentages and everything, it's a lot to go through, when you summarize it and say it was $800, and we had to replace five fixtures, that looks pretty dark, compared to this long list of all these tasks.
Yeah, we had to pay for the tasks.
I understand, but I would suggest adding that kind of to the report for the, for the lab, to see and understand, I think it simplifies it, well, yeah, we're not falling apart at the same rate of poisoning the kids.
There is a letter up there, and maybe you missed it, it was a letter from the superintendent that basically laid out the.
I don't remember answering that one.
Yeah, that was meant to be our summary of the whole process.
Is that on the website?
It is.
I don't remember the latter so much, I can't remember the extensive report, the fixture was what, but I know it was fairly complicated. On the school lunch, the student meals, even the full-price student meals, don't we get a federal subsidy on those, still? I don't know how much a lunch costs, but isn't there?
If they're paid lunches, we.
There's no federal subsidy on the backend of that, so, okay. So the fact that the adult lunches didn't increase in price, there's still an amount out of the general fund that subsidizes the lunch program, correct, it's not self-sustaining? So, part of that subsidy now, from the taxpayers, includes subsidizing the adult lunches, because they're not covering, if I understand correctly, they're not covering their costs in the adult lunches, so it's being shifted to the taxpayers?
The pricing of the lunches typically, and I can, I can't speak to the pricing of the adult lunches, I'm assuming it follows suit, we have to do something called paid lunch equity calculations every year that we give to the Bureau of Nutrition, and so every year we take a look at where our lunches are, what, what the costs are, what we're allowed to raise, what they recommend we raise, and it's a multi-tab spreadsheet, and when we addressed the student lunch issue in June, the recommendation that came out of the math was that we raised the student lunches by, I believe it was 50 cents or something, and this board felt that that was too steep of a, of a jump to make. So, to answer your question, we didn't perform that same type of calculation on a staff lunch, because that wasn't part of, you know, participating in the program. My assumption is that the cost to serve those lunches would be roughly equitable, at least at the high school level, but I, I don't, I don't have those figures for you.
Do we know what a meal costs? I'm just wondering, are the taxpayers subsidizing the teachers, or are the teachers subsidizing the students?
The teachers would pay for their own lunch.
I understood, but are they paying more than what the meal costs, or less than what the meal costs? The students clearly are paying less than what the meal costs, if the taxpayers are having to subsidize the program, but are the teachers also out of their own pocket subsidizing that program some, because they're paying more than the meal's cost? Or are the taxpayers subsidizing the teachers? So what is the, the, the cost per meal?
I understand your question, again, I haven't done that analysis, I haven't priced those meals out, I take what Cafe Services, there are, there are food service management company, I take what they give for recommendations.
Is that an answer you could get fairly easily?
I, I think I, the, the information they gave me was that the recommendation was to raise adult lunches to $4. So I can go back to them and ask them if that's truly the cost of the lunch, or, but I felt like that's what their recommendation was, because we didn't raise the student piece.
I understood, I understand, but do the meals, if the meals cost about the same, and it sounds like they're probably the same essential meal, if they cost the same, I can't imagine it costing $4, because I know what the subsidy is, it's a portion of the whole budget. And I can't believe if the meals cost us $4, and we're selling them, what's it, $2.60 now? I don't know.
$3.60.
No, for a student meal.
Oh, $2.85.
$2.85, yeah, so this is a big gap there, but I can't imagine that the meals cost $4. So I don't expect the teachers to subsidize the students or the program, but I don't want the taxpayers to subsidize the teachers' meals either, so I'd be real interested to know what those meals cost.
I can certainly go back and see if I can find that information out from Cafe Services, if that's, it's something that they would have to calculate and give us an average of, because I think different meals cost obviously different amounts on average.
Yes, on an average, yeah, I know, pizza's going to be.
I can certainly ask them for that.
Okay, thank you. And then the tuition for employees, children, their tuition into the district, that did come up at the Budget Committee a number of months ago, and it's some questions, and it's something that's kind of stuck with me. Fundamentally, and personally, I don't have any issue with using that as a job benefit to attract talent, if you feel that it's appropriate to get the people that we want for the positions, fundamentally, it doesn't bother me, I know it's not unique, the Farmington other districts do the same thing, but my concern was, the potential liability is, we frequently hear about how we could have $140,000 placement, that's a top end of the risk, but that's out there, and the risk for a student, so I hear we're doing, you know, you can bring in your student when you come to work for us, what liability does that put on us coming down the road?
So if you're talking about the liability as a special education student, none, because special education tuition is not included in that $2,000 amount, that is the responsibility of the parent, or, or some sort of organ, some sort of agreement with the LEA, what, quote-unquote, sending district, so that would not be, and that's part of the reason Janet crafted the, the contract the way she did, it's understood that that is exclusive, that is not included in any way, shape, or form, or the responsibility of Farmington, that's, that's.
And we don't have to worry about it, claim discrimination.
And transportation is also carved out of that, if they, for their own transportation.
Presumably, transportation's going to be with the parent.
Right, right.
It was more the potential financial liability, but you, we're not open to any discrimination.
No, the policy that we adopted actually carves that right out, and the tuition agreement, again, mentions in the agreement that the parent would sign, it brings it back to the fact that special education costs are not part of the $2,000 tuition. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Anyone else? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, you went like this, I thought you were waving to me. Okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 19th, which we will have a public hearing that evening as well, and that'll be 6:30, or do we want to try six, is six too difficult for you?
I think I'm not here on that day, so I think I will be here and check.
Just thinking about, just because of the public hearing.
I will, I will be here on that.
You're not here that night? Okay, so you focus on that. So start at 6 o'clock that night. Thank you to those of you who joined us this evening, and those of you who viewed from home. I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session. Three? Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, three, for, under RSA 918, colon, 32A, B, and C, for nominations and reservations. So move by Mrs. Moore.
Second.
Second by Ms. McElhenney, all those in favor, my rule?
Aye.
Good night, folks.